This call this meeting order if we could please. This is a special meeting since we had to move our regular date from the 4th to the 5th. So, our agenda items are the only items that will be discussed today. First would be the amendments, amendments from the June 6th and June 20th meeting.
What about 27?
27, I didn't have those in time.
We'll just come through.
Just got those.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the June 6th and the 20th.
Thank you Sam. Motion been made by Sam Hudson, sir second. Second by Jerry Hahn. Any further discussion? All approved, say aye. Disapprove? Motion will carry. Next would be your bills list and transfers. Questions on any of the bills?
I've got one. Have we got our containers in?
Yeah.
Hollow?
Hollow. Yeah, they were all, I think, all sent out except one I didn't pay or two.
Oh yeah.
Yeah.
The bill's not in.
I mean, once we got them in, we shipped them out to a site.
Should be under the paid bills.
It's under the end of the year bills.
Yeah, yeah.
But I thought you said it was gonna take them a while to build.
What they did, they gave us basically, the cheaper boxes what we had prices for were three sixteenths floors. And I said, could you get, you have any, you can get this here by the end of the year or by that court date. And he said, look, I'll give you the quarter inch floors for the same price as the thinner metal and I'll have them to you by Friday, which they ended up coming Monday. We got thicker metal and it's still going in time, so we're good.
Well, good.
Except for you for the cheaper price.
I remember you said something like, Courtney, you know, I had to order them, they got one or two of them and stopped, you said. Well, that's good. Sounds like you're doing a little negotiation now. I like it. I'll make a motion to pay the bills.
As a first. Most have been made here second by Bernard.
Yes.
Thank you Bernard. All approved, say aye. Disapprove? Motion will carry. You go on a roll there.
Yeah, I liked it.
You're the only, you're the half, the last one to vote. Okay, next would be the county clerk budget amendment, that was in your mailbox. And I failed to put that in, I don't think I failed to put it in your regular mail.
Yeah.
But now, you gotta understand, we're off schedule.
How you mailed it to him?
You, thank you. It was basically to cover the E-911 on the delinquent tax bills.
Yes, we found out that we have to separate those from, so we've got a little ax there for a while.
Thirty-five hundred dollars.
So, we're collecting them.
Yeah.
Along with the delinquent tax bills.
It'll be on the third page back, always at the bottom.
And the salary.
Please.
And salary. We don't know what this elected officials, a salary, so we set our budget so we...
You adjusted that.
We adjusted it.
According to statute.
Yes.
Motion to approve the amendment for the clerk's budget. Motion been made by Jeff, sir second.
I'll say.
By Sam. All approved, say aye.
Aye.
Disapprove? Motion will carry. Next would be your second reading and adoption of zoning map amendment number 2486. Fiscal Court's already approved of this on first reading and amortized for a second.
Motion to approve on second reading.
Motion by Sam Hudson to approve on second reading and adoption, sir second. Second by Keith Midcalf. All approved, say aye. Disapprove? Motion carries. Motion carries.
Everybody?
No.
No. No for Jeff. I was waiting for a real strong no.
I was looking for the, couldn't find it.
You remember it though, right?
Oh yeah, I thought this was one. I mean, I looked at it earlier, but it just looked different when I got it.
Why don't you give it a full blown description, because I figured you had it.
Oh, this is enough, it's not more.
No, that's, that's for the next court meeting. You hang on to that guys.
That's a new David Rhodes.
Yeah, hang on to that for the next court meeting.
I didn't want, didn't want to vote that one down.
Next order of business would be health insurance renewals for 17, 18. Most of you guys have already made you aware of the increases. I had, see Tony. I had a meeting with some of the employees from several different departments that were here. It was pretty much consensus that, you know, we didn't have a whole lot of choice, we had as many as four insurers that were, basically, they said they would not quote us because they could not be competitive. And that was United Healthcare, Anthem, Aetna, Cigna. And Humana gave us a quote, but it was comparative, but they had a 25% increase, it would cost you 25% more on your prescription drugs. So, that, they wouldn't give us the same comparison. So, I'm asking fiscal court to absorb that they, we had budgeted 20% increase on the, and our budget already, and letting the employee pay the 8.45% increase in the remaining portion of it. I highlight in yellow the exact premiums for you.
What'd you say, you want the employee to pay what?
Employee would pay the 8.45%.
What'd you say?
It's not separated, the 8.45% would be $60 a month. It's the last go, the last call. This is really, this sheet was really from Ron and myself, kind of a worksheet, but the $60 and 28 cents for a single, 126.59 a month for the employee and spouse, 108.51 for employee and child, and 192.90 a month for the family plan.
But some of the employees pay it?
Increase.
Increase. For fiscal court.
Not for fiscal court. You understand, don't you? We talked about it.
Yeah. Yeah, the, it's terrible. That's the bad thing about it.
Well, you know, just for the, just for the folks out there to know, we've just had a bad year, experience wise, with employees. And if you remember last year, again, you've got to think about this positive, we had zero increase last year. So, if you want to take the two years together, it's 12, about 14% increase each of the two years. So, I guess we're about where we normally would have been if we'd had an increase last year. I know this doesn't make a, but I told the salesman, you missed a vote to try to sell me that.
So, basically, their raise has been eaten up simply by that.
Oh, more than a raise. More than a raise, yeah. But now, you've got 42 employees that don't take our health insurance.
That's true.
And they're on the $1,000 a year benefit. And somewhere along the line, we probably all look at increasing that to keep enticing people to stay on that. That could be in a couple of different ways. But understand? Also, just so you know, the numbers on the amount, there's 60 single policies, there's 14 employee and spouses, there's six employee and child, and there's 24 families. Now, the families have dwindled down over the years as our workforce has matured. And a lot, I take it myself, my daughter's come off mine last year, came off mine last year, and some of the other employees throughout the different departments have had the same Entertained motion to approve the renewal with the split as described, 20%, we picked up by the county, and the 8.45% by the employee.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you Bernard.
Second.
Second by Jeff. Any further discussion? All approved, say aye. Disapprove? Motion will carry. Next would be your benefits renewal. We have an automatic renewal on our life insurance and short-term disability, we've got another two years left on that contract with a guaranteed rate. Our dental, we're waiting for final approval on the dental right now, and I'll let you, I'll bring it to the next court meeting. Next would be the police creature bids. On this particular line item, we're going to hold on that because the model changes, we're, the model change on those and Ford's no longer taking any orders for this, the model here, so within two or three weeks, they'll have me a price on the new ones.
So, we get 2018s?
18s instead of 17s, yeah. Pickup truck bids, Brad passed out, pickup truck bids to you. This was primarily for the code enforcement office.
I did hand deliver that to Franklin by the way, they just chose not to bid. It was in paper, online, on our webpage. It's tough to bid against, Conway Heathen has the state contract price.
Sure.
So, I can only assume it's just tough for anybody else.
Well, the concessions that Ford gives.
Right.
Versus what Chevrolet?
Franklin don't have the state contract bid?
Chevrolet does.
Don't have it. Well, they get Ford too.
He does, but I don't think he has the right to say, well, contract. Conway Heathen has that right. I think Conway Heathen has that right.
But they chose not to bid on the regular basis.
I can tell you, I called, I emailed, I delivered.
Yeah, well, that's good gross, I mean.
Well, your list price, you know, the one I bid out, the reason there's two on there, they kind of were confused on what I was bidding, so they gave us two things. One's a two-door extended cab, $30,000, $685, and then they gave us a four-door extended cab, which is not what I expected out, which was $33,224. The list price on the $30,000, $685, actually, is $40,750. So, that's the concession we get.
$2,000, $2,000.
I should say MSRP, is that right? Okay. Entertain a motion to approve two of those vehicles for the code.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you Sam. You can get a second to that.
Second.
Second by Jeff, discussion.
Yeah, they're gonna be four-wheel drives.
Uh huh. Correct.
P6.
P6. All approved, say aye. Disapprove? Motion will carry. Thank you Brad.
Is that the two-door?
It's two doors. And it's got the little door you open from the inside, because that's really all they Okay, next on the list, and I put this on the agenda, Keith is a little more aware of this than some of the other magistrates he serves on the committee, is the tuck point at Wickland. We received a $40,000 grant from the Trigg Foundation, I guess the Trigg Estate, I guess, I don't know if it's the foundation or not, to help with the restoration of that, that's the second $40,000 we received. The first one, we spent on the windows, redoing the windows. Here, we want to do the tuck point, believe me, when you go around that building, it needs some tender loving care. And so, in doing so, we've chosen, I actually chosen this fellow because of the state's recommendation, and also Bill Trigg had recommended him as well. Except, his name is, it's got his name there, I can see his face now. Miller, Miles Miller, I can get it out, I can see right here. He'd actually done some seminars here in Barstown before on tuck pointy, on historic properties, and I just wanted the court, even though it is a specialty service, we're not required to bid, sort of like insurance services or other professional services, we can just do interviews and choose who we want to based on their skills and knowledge in the industry.
Is he gonna have four people there every day, or if you don't know?
I don't know yet for sure. That's, those are his rates, and just have to, he thinks he can get everything down on the building within our budget, what we've got, within a few dollars.
And he is insured, correct?
Yeah, we'll have that, yes.
And he's gonna maybe replace one chimney?
Yeah, he talked about sometimes when chimneys, when you get up there and start looking at them, sometimes you have to take them all the way down to the level, then rebuild them back up. But you won't know that until you really get up there.
If he comes in under budget, can fix it one post up there against the road? It does need some attention at one point.
Yeah, those, those posts were add-ons later on.
Were they?
Yeah, it does need some attention. And if I had the right inmate, Dorgan's giving me the right inmate, we could probably get that done for nothing.
Sheriff can do that.
Sheriff needs to look for a bricklayer on.
But you're, I would like to motion to, even though it is grant money and the Triggs are paying for it.
I'll make that motion.
To come to fiscal court, to award to Miles Miller the contract. Motion been made by Keith, second by Jeff. All approved, say aye. Disapprove? Motion will carry. You do understand there are other people that do that, that work even in our own community, but because of the specialty of this, we chose to use this particular fellow, because we didn't have such good luck with him when we did our courthouse a few years ago. And we took the low bidder and we got the low bid.
I'd like to see how that turns out, because we've got some additional.
Yeah. I worry it may be a little more aware of that too Brad.
That we need to do before we do our...
Right. Maybe that'd be a good thing to say to him, and that'll entice him to do a little other...
But I would love to not say to it and see how it does.
Aye.
I wouldn't like him to guarantee it all.
According to his, according to his resume, when I, when you contact the people that on this list, the work he's done, he is the best in the state at doing this. That's all you can say, you know, unless you've used him before.
Tell you he's gonna have a magistrate out there watching him every day.
I'll get up on that scaffold.
The rates are...
I tell you, you go to the, you go to the, you go to that one side of that building, and you sit down there, you know where the cellar is?
Yes.
Up on the side, you look up, you look to see how the scaffold is gonna have to put up there. Three stories.
Yeah, I don't know.
He probably uses sky track, he will be...
No, he says probably use scaffold. Landfill report, compactor.
We're looking into one, we have one in Marcel Equipment in Canada, 826G is gonna get, hopefully, in his yard this week, so he can go through and look at it, give us a price, and it'll be pretty comparable to what our last machine was. It's a 1998 826G, so hopefully I'll have more information on that.
And should we also look at maybe a newer model? I know we're trying to stay within $200,000 to $300,000. Are we being shortsighted? I'm asking the court that, thank you.
I would say...
You wanna buy one in this 25 years?
I know.
You wanna do that.
The webpage you sent me to this morning.
Part of the success of life is putting everything out on the table, see what's at the...
We can't, and, you know, they bid stuff that was, what, 2008 for $400,000.
Yeah.
I'm all about that, it's just, I've never asked for something that...
A fire is a fire. It's 50 years old.
They'll burn a $400,000, $400,000, $500,000, $1,000.
I guess if I'm gonna use a favor, I'd probably ask for a mechanic before I will a compactor.
Yeah. Well, we're gonna talk about that.
Okay. That's a good lead-in for you.
Yeah, he's already, he's already...
Maybe we won't have to worry about the fire then.
You're gonna say, expect them with fire extinguishers on, would you?
We have.
What year is that?
We can add a couple of fire kits.
Yeah, but you're gonna have an auto fire, that's...
But, but, I'm asking the court, are we being a little short-sighted here by looking at, we got a price in mind that we want to spend on them, because that's where the market is, on a used equipment with so many years and miles and hours they go with.
If it's got a rebuilt motor, I don't have a problem with it.
Is it the same people we bought the last one?
Yes.
We had good luck with them, haven't we?
Yeah, we're dealing with two or three different people. One up in Canada's hard Marcel Equipment, we've all, I want to say two, with those guys over the years. I've had real good luck with those guys, to be honest with you, they stand behind the product.
They told you they did this, they told you you did that.
The last one we bought, actually what happened is, we bought it as is, they had the guy from E-Town, Earth Movement Equipment, they worked a deal out with those guys, because I told them I wanted the engine rebuilt, part of the deal. So, they paid that guy, so we had somebody local, that when something went wrong, they 'd pick the phone up, and they'd come back and work on the engine. They stood behind that product. There's a guy out in Missouri, they've got the Rexas, and John and I both have talked to our employees about that, and the quote I got this morning is, we waited four weeks, what's the use of rushing in and getting something else? You know, let's try to make sure we get what we need as far as the, they really like those cats, the other ones just don't understand that they're prone to fail. It's just, it's hard. Dean sent us... It's hard for those Rexas too. Right. Dean sent us to webpage this morning, actually, while you guys were doing, we're over here looking at it, there's a place up in Michigan that has a lot of them, and they show them online, thank God. They got their picture up there, and you call them, yeah, we sold that one. We're waiting for another one to come in, so they, it's kind of bait and switch. You can contact them, the one I gave you, when you contact it, owners individually. Yeah, and when you click on the actual compactor, it says best equipment, and that's in Michigan, and they've got a ton of them online showing, thank God. He's talked to them, I've called them, they're all looking. They want you to get the call.
Yeah, wants to call.
It's just, most landfills don't want to spend that price.
$600, $700, $700 for a new.
The internet though, at different landfills, the majority of the equipment is cat equipment.
Correct.
What do we price them? A little more.
We can do that. We have. I tell you what, let's do this, what's our next court meeting? Our next court meeting would be the... I do good with, I do good with deadlines.
This coming too?
No. Tuesday a week. I do good with deadlines, so my next court meeting... Two weeks, two weeks yesterday. Let's figure it out, and we'll give this guy in Canada a deadline and say, look, we gotta have an answer by this time, and if not, we can consider a more costly option. And who's saying we can't negotiate? As long as you can negotiate now, you know, go up. Assuming they're still there. And that's, you're allowed to do that. Correct. As long as your budget, I think the rules say if your budget has, the landfill's budget has the cash in it, so.
Okay. That leads into the next item, Brad, thanks for that introduction.
I tried to move on Dean, I know when to move on.
We actually have interviewed about four people, and I want to ask the court here today to consider, we were considering, we want to consider somebody that would be a mechanic and mechanic's helper. But I'm inclined to go ahead and say, because of the nature of the business out there, that we go ahead and get two top-notch mechanics, not just a helper. You understand what I'm saying? People that can do it all, both, until there's, you'll get two people out working together, one's gonna think they know more than the other, and they could, you know, mechanics are a little temperamental sometime.
It ain't on the mechanics.
Magistrates?
Most, most mechanics are missing a finger to...
Candy devils. But it would cost you, it would be an additional probably $10,000 or $12,000 more a year.
We could also use the road department if we got something Steve don't have time to do.
Yeah, and Steve pretty much handles that road department.
I like that.
But he gets help now, where Steve does.
We got 20-plus pieces of equipment that one guy is trying to take care of now, and the worst equipment that's put on this earth, you know? Nasty, dirty, stinking.
Dripping in your eye.
One applicant, it was interesting, Steve's working for a competitor, it's all, is the number of pieces of equipment he's responsible for is 15, but it's all on-road stuff. So, it's a different animal, you know, I think I counted one day, we got like 10 to 12 pieces running on the road, and then you got four or five that are physically up in the landfill. I'm telling you, those four or five probably equal 10 over the road, because you spend a half a day cleaning and fighting the stuff to get it out to work on it. So, my point is, we're probably stressed out over the number of pieces one guy probably should be over.
Getting all the old changes in.
That's where you, that's the easiest thing to overlook, because when you got a guy that's broken, that's the exact... We'll do tomorrow.
So, we were looking at somebody that's gonna be in the $18, $19, $20 range, the $18 range probably, depending on experience, 19 maybe, as a secondary helper, and then so we're looking at maybe bringing somebody else in at $23, $24 an hour, like complement the other, their mechanics.
Can you see if he's got air conditioning qualities? Are you looking for that?
That needs to be a question. I've got, I've got a whole list of certifications.
I mean, you know, we...
That's a big thing.
Yes. When you got an angry garbage truck driver out here on a 100 to 10 degree day.
Agreed.
And then have to get in that hot truck.
Agreed.
Let's do that.
What do you think Jeff? What's your thoughts on that? Go ahead and get to what we've considered a little more, and if we're going to do that, let's look, and I'm throwing this out on the table, I'm thinking out loud today, and I don't want to do that too well. We're at $23.33 an hour for each of the mechanics. That's about a dollar or two, at least $2 under the market. And I would like to take Steve and these mechanics up to at least the $25 range.
Or are you gonna have both mechanics, why don't you out there have one chief mechanic and then one just a little bit under?
Yeah.
Because if you have two chiefs out there, they kind of operate a little different.
That's what I was saying, that's what I was kind of referring to a few minutes ago.
So, if we can do...
I don't know about that. There's a department here that's got that exact same problem now. So, I'm a little irritated at that one.
I understand what you're talking about.
Also, two mechanics.
Yeah, and I really would like to, some flexibility to increase that pay based on the market today. I can tell you, with Steve's experience, with mechanic that we're looking at doing there, in fact, we're probably, he probably may not even accept a job when he finds out that the health insurance is one of $200 more a month, or $2,400 a year, or that's an extra dollar an hour increase, and so, you understand what I'm saying? So, to be competitive with the market, we really probably ought to, ought to jump those salaries up. And that's not out of line with the market, especially somebody with some experience and training.
Well, will you check in on what other landfills are paying?
Not the other landfills, I think it's the other mechanics in general.
Well, landfill mechanics, I'd say that's a different animal. If, I personally was going after a job, I wouldn't go after a landfill mechanic.
No, you, but you go out, yeah.
Like you say, dripping in your eyes, push mail.
The one that was just a competitor, what was, you had figured out what he made?
He was in the ballpark of what Steve was making, but his health insurance, I mean, we led a comparison Monday when I interviewed him. His health insurance is exactly what we're paying, what we're all about, I'm saying right now, but if I go to him and try to offer him a job, he's gotta pay $2,000, $2,400, $2,300 more in health insurance, he's probably gonna stay where he is. Follow what I'm saying guys? I just need some flexibility.
His, his drive time compensated for that.
I understand that, but they don't put money on the table.
Right.
They don't pay for the bills.
Can we think about it, or do you want to...
We need to move on this mechanic position. I just, I just think we need to bring him up to the $25 an hour range.
I agree on Steve.
And Steve's as valuable to the road department as this guy is the landfill.
Well, I'm just saying that, but are y'all sure, should you beat them two right off the market, the same as Steve? Because Steve's been down there and he does a heck of a job.
Oh, he does, yeah. But also, Steve does not want to go to the landfill.
And Steve's got a little clingy.
I tried to entice him, dinner bread.
Why?
Entice.
Put me back a motion maker.
I would need, entertain a motion to allow me to, some flexibility on the salaries of the mechanics to, at least the $25 an hour range. Motion by Bernard Ice, sir second. Second by Jerry. All approved, say aye.
Aye. I'd like to have some discussion.
Okay, discussion.
Discuss, you go ahead.
You're still gonna have, you want to move Steve there, and then you want both mechanics mechanics out there, have a landfill to make that up?
No, no, I'll be able to take the one and probably do that, the other at the twenty-three dollar.
Okay, well, I'm okay with that. I just don't think both of them should come in. I'm like Jerry, you know, Steve's been there a long time, and I'd be a little bit upset if, you know.
But you also realize, you also realize when we hire a garbage guy, and he's coming in, he makes a dollar an hour, only makes a dollar an hour less for six months, and he goes up to whatever else he makes, because he's doing the same job every day. It's the benefit package is where the employees are benefiting from.
Yeah, but still, I'm like Jerry, you know, you can't step on people.
I agree, now, and Steve would go up to be, you know.
And that's why I'm a little reluctant on these to be such a difference in their price range, too, because one guy wants to sit in the office and the other guy do all the work, I don't like that.
Well, they're both going to be workers. That'd be up to John.
That's what John gets paid for.
I know they're going to have.
And Brad.
Some, like he said, to call and order parts.
They'll both be up.
Oh, Steve's on the phone a lot and the internet a lot, getting me prices, doesn't he? Brad? He gets, he's pretty good about having quotes on.
I hope we have a good vetting process here.
Motion's been made, it's second. Discussion's been had, clear your craw.
Yep.
All approved, say aye. Disapproved. Which way, you caught me in between now, yes or no?
A little quick, I will, I'll per, reluctantly.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. To go to twenty-five dollars an hour for a mechanic, if need be. Up two.
If need be.
Now you just put it on national TV, so.
Up two.
Up two, we didn't, it's not mandatory.
General report, anything else in your rigor report?
Just real quick, our highest education last week, they got to put in, they're doing testing now, so hopefully get that back, maybe the end of the week. I think you just called me just now, so hopefully the end of the week or first of next week, we can get that back. That's all I have.
Road department report, blacktop list, by having blacktop list ready, one, two.
Well, you want to settle on your sand?
For right now.
Okay. Anybody else going, going? Everybody's approved, with the exception of some stragglers.
Yeah, I'll have to run, but I'll have to let.
Okay.
You can add the, we talked about that, or add the sound agreement to the list there on that list right in front of me, but do you have that, Brad?
I have it, but I can sit on it.
Let's sit on it till next week.
Okay.
And listen, who's.
I don't have a.
You got actually last night.
Perfectly fine, I guess.
Yeah, I'll wait with Sam.
Okay, let's go on to flex funds. I've got the final contract on the flex funds. Need a motion from the fiscal court to approve those roads to be, to issue a PO for those roads, they were.
You got a little.
I got them right here.
Okay.
Somewhere.
I got them right here. We got Hope Bridge, it's a portion of it.
You got it, Dean?
No, go ahead, I can put my finger on it.
Okay, it's approximately eight thousand feet of Hope Bridge, Jerry will finish the rest of it out for your money. All of King Road, we got Potter Shop, which is from Mill Creek Bridge on Potter Shop, Ed Brent to Mill Creek, right there.
Yes.
And then we got Newton Valley Road. And that's the total road on that. Elaine, I can get you a copy of this.
Entertained a motion to approve the PO, request a word for that work to be done?
Motion been made by Sam, seconded by Jeff, he has his head up, so. All approved, say aye. Disapproved, motion will carry. Good statement, they returned those flex funds back pretty fast, but. General report, Brad.
Okay, so sticking on blacktop, I've issued POs for Berners and Keith's district, Sam, Jerry, and Jeff. I'm still sitting on the POs, last week's rain has kind of threw me behind. I don't like issuing POs, I told you guys this before, until I look at the road to make sure it's not a culvert that's going to catch me short, because once I issue the PO, maybe it's free to do it. So I'll try this week and beginning next to get to you guys and try to get that out, flex funds included, just to make sure we don't get caught on something real short.
General report, Bushhogs completed our second rounds in districts one and three, we're halfway through four. I would assume, depending on weather, we may get out of your district this week, we'll see. Then we saw.
We're back over.
Yeah, I know. Then we got five and two, of course. Right now, we only got one more running, clutch one out of the tractor on Thursday.
So we can use the boom more then?
We're on the boom more today. So Ricky and Steve are breaking the boom more, I mean, not boom more, the tractor in two in between his stuff, and trying to get that clutch fixed and that tractor we all run, one of the Bushhogs, so that may check us up a little bit, but it'll be what it'll be. Greer, what we call our Greer crew, spent two days on a low water crossing on Humphrey Lane East, that worked out real well, where it was breaking up real bad. Since then, we've been on Ed Powell Road, widening, you guys approved that project. Sam, if I had to guess, if weather stays off of us this week, we'll be done with that one section, and then next week we'll curl around the road and do on towards Brian Drive. Everything's working well, we lost them out by last week. Second one, okay.
I'm aware of.
Okay.
Remember our chat meeting, we talked about that?
That's right. And we'll deal with it. Greer crew, Balltown Park, we got that tree for you, it's key. Shoemate Lane, we got a culvert in. Redid Iced Town Road, two times, we're back again today on the third time. Somebody really likes tearing that road up down there on that.
On that one area?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Third time today.
Where's it located?
Right at the intersection of Iced Town and Forty-Nine. There's a ditch, forty-six, I mean, and there's a ditch real close by, and somebody keeps getting in it with a big piece of equipment, I don't know what it is. Makes it where it doesn't drain, we have to get to it. Due to the heavy, heavy rain, we had some issues on Woodlawn Box Culvert, Sam and Dean, you guys have seen pictures, it's repaired back now.
That was a good repaired job.
That was, guys, what happened is, that culvert damage, for a six-inch rain event, it's not going to hold it, and it went up and over the road, washed out the backside of it. So what we did is went to IMI, hauled rock in, concrete, and put it in to stabilize the shoulders and whatnot, and got it back to where it's safe again. So some point in time in the future, we're probably going to have to put that on the list of culverts to get to, and it'll need to be a bridge, really. It's just not big enough.
It'd be an expensive project.
Yes, it would. So went around, we're still continuing to remove debris from culverts, continue to write work orders, guys, it helps us, Jerry, I know you probably got some in your area, I know Berners wrote up some, we've been down through a bunch of roads.